Okay, I'm showing 6:30. If we can get everybody to their seats, we can get started, get this meeting on the road. City Council meeting for October 24th, 2011 now come to order. Please remember times indicated next to agenda items are approximate start times only. Please turn off all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Natow.
Here.
Mayor Protem Snyder.
Here.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McEldowney.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can the audience please rise for a moment of silence and then join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Mayor, we have amended assignments for Jason Melphy. He passed away this weekend.
Okay.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, will staff please pass around the microphone for introductions?
Pam Sprotler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Chris Thompson.
Carolyn White.
Pierre Moserne.
Bill Perez.
Gene Lethal, Board of Adjustment.
Joy Bishop.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks and Recreation.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
Greg Clements, Public Works Department.
Jason Leslie, Finance Department.
Paul Workman, Planning Staff.
Terry Rigo.
Jim Hayes, Community Development.
Chris Kramer, Planning Division.
Michelle Hill, Economic Development.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
David Juarez, Municipal Court.
Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development.
Mel Baca, Chief of Police.
In four years, four and a half years, I don't think this has ever happened. I have no one on the citizen communication. So, we will go straight to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. Councils, remind you, these items can be removed from the consent agenda for discussion purposes at the request of a council member. Does anyone wish to remove either of the items from the consent agenda? Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I'd like to remove Resolution 2011-68, the resolution approving agreement for reappointment of Municipal Court Judge Juarez, to do it as a separate item.
Okay. Can I get a second on that? Ms. Teeter?
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay. Is that okay? And then, do we need the vote or not? Yes?
Not really, because...
Okay.
I just want to give him the respect and the honor that is due.
Okay, the only item on the consent agenda tonight will be Z-776-05-11. Open for a motion at this time?
Got it.
Ms. Snyder?
Move approval of Z-776-05-11. Counsel is seated.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will City Attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance Z-776-05-11, an ordinance approving Suncor Energy USA Inc., PUD First Amendment. Attached here to is Exhibit A and made a part hereof for the property generally located at 5700 York Street, Commerce City, Colorado.
Okay, motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a roll call vote, please. Vote is nine yeses. Consent agenda is passed. Thank you. Now go to Resolution 2011-68. Ms. Snyder? Do you want to... Yeah, and then we'll do discussion.
Okay. Move approval of Resolution 2011-68.
Mr. McEldowney?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-68. Discussion. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I'd just like to take this moment to thank the judge. He has really, truly done a wonderful job. He's changed the way things are run in this court in the time that I've been here. I was fortunate to be on the council that first appointed him, and he continues to do a wonderful job here. He is a wonderful philanthropic member of our charity and does a lot of charities for our community. He just is, does a really great job. So, I want to take this moment to personally end with counsel joining me, thank Judge Juarez for a fine job he does.
Mr. McEldowney?
I would just echo Councilman Snyder's comments. It's been my privilege to work more closely with the judge over the last, I guess it's almost a year now. We've been working as part of a small group called the Commerce City Cultural Diversity Committee, I guess, for lack of a better working title. And it's been really neat to be able to sit down at that level and see the perspectives that the judge brings and gain those insights into how his court is working to help better Commerce City. I just really want to applaud him for the creativity that he brings to the job. We are very fortunate to have you in our service, sir. So, thank you.
Ms. Peter?
Yes, I too, along with Tracy Snyder, was one of the councils that first appointed you, and I'm very proud of that decision that we did. I also want to thank you for running your court very orderly, and you're in total control, and it's amazing some of the cases that you have to deal with and plan on spending some more Thursdays there. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. I'd also like to thank you and tell you that in speaking with different people I know, and just last Wednesday, I was at Union Solidarity Day over in, at our union hall, and one of the guys came up to me and he says, "Your judge stuck me for $200." And I said, "Well, thank you. You know, the city thanks you and everything," and he explained it, and I said, "He did exactly what he was supposed to do, and that's all we can ask of him." And if... I'm just thankful that you're here. Thank you so much.
Your Honor, would you want to say a few words? You don't have to, but...
I just happened to be here for a meeting of our Summit Committee team and saw that I was on the agenda and thought if anyone had any questions. I obviously know all of you. Ms. Carson, you're about the only person I haven't had any regular contact with. So, hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll get to know each other a little better. But everything's fine for me, and if it's fine for you...
Terrific.
...I'm good to go. Thank you very much again. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
How much... I mean, your department always makes money for us, it seems like, Judge Juarez. How much have you made for us this year? We're in a budget crunch here.
As I say, I don't have an exact dollar figure, but you know, we make... We broke the million-dollar mark about three years ago. We've gone up about six to eight percent every year, even in a down economy. We are... We do in two days what most courts do in four. So, it's... In a down economy, we're doing fine. They're... I'm not concerned that we're not covering the costs of our department at all.
Right. Do you know what the breakdown would be for the red light camera? Is the red light camera really paying off for us?
I don't have those numbers, but I will have them by the time I do an end-of-the-year discussion with you all. I think Councilman McEldowney asked me last year to come in and do something in December. I think we're going to probably be doing the same thing again, or maybe early in January. Probably, it's better if we do it in January, because then I'll have the full year's totals for everything. But yes, obviously, it's helped me a lot because it eliminated all of those from my docket, and they're a fairly significant number. The last few times I've been through the intersection at night, though, I haven't been getting blinded by the light, so people are paying attention. That's a dangerous intersection.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you. Ms. Carson?
Judge, I just wanted to also thank you for your work. You and I were sworn in together, and I take it as a compliment when a judge says he's really not had any workings with me. But no, thank you. I always hear great things about you in the city, and I know your job isn't an easy one, so thank you.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. City Attorney, please read the title?
Title, Resolution 2011-68, Resolution approving agreement for reappointment of Municipal Court Judge.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Mr. McEldowney, did you want to... Okay. Voice vote, okay, on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same? Thank you very much. From everybody, thank you very much, sir. Okay, there's two items under the public hearing scheduled for this evening. I want to open the public hearing for the conditional use permit, CU-47-96-98-11. Will City Manager Jerry Flannery please invite staff up to review the case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to ask Mr. Paul Workman to come to the front.
Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. Before we get started this evening, some of the facts in the applicant in this case may sound a bit familiar. He did come before this body and request to meet with staff to identify and work through some of the issues that were on his property and try and work with him to try and reach some solutions that would work for both he and his tenants and the city. So, staff's very proud to be here to present this case this evening, as it marks a real sort of collaborative effort with the applicant this evening to resolve his issues and, you know, keep his tenants happy. So, with that, we'll get started. The case, as mentioned, CU-47-96-98-11. Subject property is located at the southeast corner of East 58th Avenue and Holly Street. The applicant is Mr. Terry Rigo, and he's requesting to modify some conditions on a previously approved conditional use permit. Subject property is mentioned, located in the southeast corner of 58th Avenue and Holly Street. It's currently zoned I-1. It's surrounded by other properties that are zoned I-1. And the city's comprehensive plan calls this out for general industrial uses. There is relevant case history on this site. Back in 1996, the required... The city required that any outdoor storage in this area of the city was required to have a conditional use permit. So, back in 1996, Mr. Rigo applied for and received approval to have outdoor storage on this property. That approval was granted subject to conditions. Those conditions are outlined on this slide here. Generally speaking, the conditions that are listed in black will be removed via this case. The ones to point out, 2A, required a landscape plan with a 20-foot landscape buffer on the south and west property line. That is proposed to be modified as part of this case. And letter four there, there is no proposed change to that language, which allows the CUP to be approved for the property itself and can be transferred from one property owner to another. This is an aerial of the subject property, 58th Avenue on the left-hand side of the photo. Holly Street would be just off the screen on the bottom portion. The area that was approved for outdoor storage is this area just south of the southernmost building, and then the 20-foot landscape buffer along the south and west property lines. So, this is an additional aerial, again, 58th Avenue to the north, Holly Street to the west. The applicant has had a successful site with profitable tenants, and in order to continue to provide adequate space for those tenants, he needs to make some changes to his site. Specifically, an addition to the west on his property address is 5658. When that occurs, that will impact access and circulation onto the site. The area with the two blue boxes are the current in-use access onto and off of the property. However, when this addition is made onto the property, it will impact this westernmost access on 58th to be able to provide access to the large semi-trucks and trailers and things of that nature that are vital to the additional businesses that are on the property. So, that addition will impact circulation for this access here. In addition, the loading dock onto this site will be modified to only allow for these smaller trucks, and then an additional dock will be located to the west of that 5672 building in order for trucks to access off of... Excuse me, to provide the loading dock for the tortilla manufacturer that's located there. So, those were many of the issues that were identified by staff and the property owner. Staff spent numerous meetings and hours with Mr. Rigo, trying to find solutions that worked for his tenants, that worked for the city, and that met the needs of Mr. Rigo. This truly was a collaborative effort and process for all those involved. At the end of those conversations, it was decided by the city and the property owner to pursue the application that's here this evening in order to change the conditions that were previously placed specifically for the landscape buffer on the south and west side, and to remove those irrelevant conditions. And in addition to that, staff is prepared to approve a minor modification, which is an administrative process for the proposed gate location to the property. So, this is the site plan that was provided by Mr. Rigo. Again, 58th Avenue on the north part of the photo here, Holly Street on the left-hand side. So, as counsel can see, there's the addition on the northernmost building, which will still impact circulation on the property. However, what's been proposed by the applicant and agreed to via the conversations is to provide this sort of mini maneuvering area for large trailer trucks to pull off of East Holly Street, all the way off of public right-of-way, and be able to make this backing maneuver into the new loading dock. And again, there is a gate that would be located 30 feet back from the existing right-of-way, the property line here. The city standard is 50 feet. The reason that it's 50 feet is to allow these large semi-trucks to pull all the way off of a public right-of-way to make a maneuver. However, with this modified truck maneuvering area, the applicant has still met the intent of the 50-foot requirement, which is why staff's prepared to approve the minor modification. And should City Council decide to approve the reduction in the landscaping on the west side and the south side of the property, the applicant has agreed to increase the landscaping directly at the corner, which should provide more public appeal, make it more visible. In addition, moving the existing fence behind the existing landscaping will make it more visible from the public right-of-way and create a better pedestrian space. This is the existing conditions on the south property line where the landscaping currently is installed. This is the existing gate and curb cut that is located off of Holly Street that would be moving the 30 feet back. And this is a close-up of the fence that is currently installed, and again, would be moving back behind the 10-foot landscape buffer and the truck maneuvering area that's off of the public right-of-way. So, in reviewing the application, Planning Commission started with a technical review. They determined that the request this evening does meet the approval criteria in the Land Development Code for a conditional use permit. It also meets the comp plan approval criteria, and the changes essentially remove irrelevant conditions while ensuring there's compliance with the City Council-approved landscape plan, which was the ultimate intent back in 1996. Planning Commission and staff also determined that there are some contextual, some additional benefits, right, just opposed to the traditional checklist items. The first is that the tenant need is a legitimate request. That's a legitimate reason to work with the property owner in order to keep these buildings rented. The changes are consistent with the surrounding area and the fact that the fencing will be moved behind the landscaping. It will make it more noticeable when you're on those public rights-of-way, and it's a positive model for the... Those three other corners at 58th and Holly, when they come in for redevelopment. The proposed modification meets the intent of those original conditions, and by approving this, staff felt like the property would continue to be a contributing member of Commerce City's business community. So, with that, Planning Commission is recommending approval of this request, subject to two conditions. The first is that the applicant would install and maintain landscaping on the subject property in accordance with the approved site plan from September 12th, 2011, which is the plan that was earlier in the presentation, and the... That any substantive changes to that plan would require City Council's approval. And the second condition, as mentioned, is a leftover from the previous conditional use permit that would approve the CUP for the property and would allow it to be transferred from one property owner to another. So, that would conclude staff's presentation this evening. However, staff is certainly available for any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Ms. Peter?
Yes, I just have one. Is this on the east or the west side?
It is on the east side of Holly Street.
Okay, that's what I thought by the pictures. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Workman, is there any... Has any thought been given to how traffic will be affected along 56th Avenue with the new access point there for the trucks that... Off the right-of-way?
On the northern end. On the northern property line there, the access there. Actually, the addition of the structure onto the northernmost building will actually lessen the access from this westernmost access point here, because it will only be accessible from smaller vehicles and smaller trucks. So, in reality, what is used on a pretty consistent basis, that westernmost access, should be reduced based on just the sheer logistics of getting vehicles in and out of that area. Again, you know, traditional-sized vehicles would be able to access the property from the east and west off of 58th. Really, what it would be doing is shifting sort of those larger vehicle deliveries to this access on Holly Street and then the easternmost on 58th.
I see. So, it looks like from the diagram that the fencing, the new proposed fencing, will actually be... The trucks, when they pull in, will actually be on the outside of the fencing. Is that correct?
That's correct. On Holly Street?
Yes.
That's correct, yes. The Holly Street is sort of just off of the drawing here. Then there would be a 10-foot landscape buffer, then a 20-foot sort of truck parking slash maneuvering area, and then the fence would be relocated. So, the fence that's currently at the property would be repositioned to 30 feet behind where it currently is.
And I'm looking at the existing landscaping that's already there. Would improvements be made to that, or would it be left the same?
On the south and west property line?
Yeah.
It would be a modification of what's currently there with the river rock and the junipers and the pine trees and things of that nature. And then, any... Well, the reduction, the additional 10 feet on both property lines would be accounted for in the additional landscaping that would occur right at the intersection of Holly and 58th.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, I had that same question about the landscaping. I believe with the fencing being placed backward and the landscaping in front, hopefully, it'll be maintained better than what the pictures show?
Yes, ma'am, that's certainly a hope.
That would enhance the area, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. McEldowney?
So moved.
Ms. Teeter?
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve conditional use permit, CU-47-96-98-11. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move approval of CU-479698-11.
Mr. McEldowney?
It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit, CU-47-96-98-11. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the City Attorney please read the title? Title reads, "Conditional Use Permit for Outdoor Storage in Case CU-47-96-98-11."
Motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a roll call vote, please. Vote is nine yeses. Conditional use has been approved. Thank you very much. Next item under public hearing scheduled for this evening is Resolution 2011-58. It's a continuation of the 2012 budget and certification of the mill levy. I'd like to open the public hearing for Resolution 2011-58 and give the audience an opportunity to speak on the item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify on this particular item? Okay, doesn't seem like there is. Any discussion by members of City Council at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2011-58. Mr. McEldowney?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-58.
Ms. Teeter?
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2011-58. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the City Attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation."
Sorry, sorry. I got it. Resolution 2011-58, adopting the budget for the City of Commerce City, Colorado for the year 2012, and providing for 2011 Commerce City tax levy. Okay, have a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request of voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same?
No.
I have one no. I have eight yeses and one no. Motion still passes. There are four resolutions on the agenda tonight that were not included in the consent agenda because they require a separate voice vote. First is Resolution 2011-56, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation, AN226-11. Is there any discussion from counsel? Mr. McEldowney? No? Then I would be... Entertain a motion, Mr. McEldowney?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-56.
Mr. Diaz?
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-56. Any further discussion? Mr. Moreno?
Quick question of staff. I imagine the property in question for this resolution I imagine the property in question for this resolution will go through the process, planning commission, and then we'll determine there if it meets annexation criteria. I see none, so I'm going to take that as a yes. No.
The annexation process will be followed as required by the state statute, and it comes before city council, scheduled for December 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, will the city attorney please read the title?
I'll read the right one this time, Mr. Mayor.
Well, this would have been it.
Resolution 2011-56, "Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation," AN 226-11.
I've had a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Next are resolutions 2011-28, 2011-60, 2011-61. They are all the results of city council's programs for business incentives. Will city manager please invite staff to come forward for an explanation of the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring Brittany Morris, Economic Development Director, to come forward and introduce the item.
Items.
Good evening. Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development, mayor, members of council. I am going to call up Michelle Hill, who again is our official incentive program administrator, and she's had some foot surgery.
Skating her way up.
So she will be up here in a moment, and she will be presenting three incentive agreements tonight for your consideration. Thank you.
Can you go down the hill really fast in that?
There's a break. I wish I had that last... Keeps it under control, so don't ask for you.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. With your permission, I'll go ahead and cover all three incentives at once, as we've done in the past, and then move forward. So the first resolution, as presented, is Resolution 2011-28, "Approving Business Incentives for Clara Corporation." Clara Corporation is the franchisee of McDonald's located on Parkway Drive. This is just an incentive for the existing retailer, sales tax rebate from 2010, and they have to use those funds to market the business. So that's the extent of that one. They also intend to hire two new employees. They will be paid below the county average. The second resolution is 2011-60, "Approving Business Incentives for El Hardine Restaurant." El Hardine works seeking incentives tonight for them for existing business, existing retailer, and job creation. The existing business incentive is for capital improvements that they're doing to the restaurant. They're going to enclose the patio area to create a lounge, and that will provide an opportunity for customers to have indoor seating when there's a long waiting. The total of that capital investment is estimated to be $250,000. In addition, they are intending to create six new jobs, which again will be below the county average, which is consistent with restaurants and retail. And then also the 2010 sales tax rebate, 5% of those taxes to be used for marketing the business. So those are the three incentives that we're asking for tonight. On both of those restaurants, due to proprietary information, we cannot disclose the total amount. That will be determined at a later time by the finance division, and that's consistent with what we've presented in the past. The final resolution is Resolution 2011-61, "Approving Business Incentives for South Adams County Water and Sanitation District." They are planning to build a new building on their current location, which is at 6595 East 70th Avenue. The total capital investments will be about 3.2 million. 2.7 million of that will be the construction of the new building. They do plan to not build to lead certification standards, but incorporate significant energy efficiency and other green building practices. So we're asking for incentives tonight for them as an existing business and for the green building practices. The total estimated amount of the incentive will be $21,439. That is a 10% rebate of the sales and use tax on those capital improvements, as well as a 50% rebate of the building permit and plan check fee. They do not plan to hire any new employees once they move into the new building. And with that, I would entertain any questions that you have about any of these three incentives.
Ms. Teeter, if you have a question?
Just a couple of things. I am so in favor of these incentives. That's one of the reasons we have the King Supers coming in. I wanted to make a comment about that medical apparatus you had.
Okay.
I wished I had it last year when I broke my knee. I'd be a lot better than that locker.
It helps a lot.
And I did attend that open house for South Adams County Water Department, and the building's going to be placed right in back of the current one, I believe, with a lot of green building practices. So thank you all for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Marino?
Michelle, a couple of questions. A couple of months ago, we approved business incentives... We approved catalyst funds for El Hardine based on the fact that they are located in the Derby Business District. Those are not included in this, correct? Those are in addition?
That's correct. That's in addition because it is a separate program for the facade improvements.
Wonderful. And based on the significance of the project with South Adams County Water, did we... I know that a lot of businesses have come before us that are... have significant capital improvement projects. We negotiate above and beyond incentives for those projects. This seems to me like it would qualify for that category. Is there a reason why we didn't approve above and beyond incentives for this project?
Yes, on the current program, the threshold for the projects of economic development significance is $10 million in capital investment. This is substantially less than that, so it does fall under the standard program.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on any of these resolutions? Okay. If not, the first of the business incentive resolutions to vote on is Resolution 2011-28, "Resolution Approving Business Incentive for Clara Corporation." I'll now entertain a motion. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve Resolution 2011-28.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2011-28. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution 2011-28, "Resolution Approving Business Incentive for Clara Corporation."
Motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Next is Resolution 2011-60, "Resolution Approving Business Incentive for an El Hardine Incorporated." I'll now entertain the motion at this time. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, move approval of Resolution 2011-60. Council is seated.
Mr. Marino?
Second the motion.
So moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2011-60. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution 2011-60, "Resolution Approving Business Incentive for El Hardine, Inc."
Motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Next resolution is 2011-61, "Resolution Approving Business Incentive for South Adams County Water and Sanitation District." Now entertain a motion. Mr. McElhany?
Move to approve ordinance... I'm sorry, Resolution 2011-61.
Mr. Bullock?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-61. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution 2011-61, "Resolution Approving Business Incentive for South Adams County Water and Sanitation District."
Okay, I've had a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Mr. Marino, is that for next one? Okay. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. Onto ordinance and second reading. There's one ordinance on second reading. It's Ordinance 1873, an ordinance amending Ordinance 764 regarding elected officials' retirement system in the City of Commerce City. Council, have any further questions or discussion regarding this ordinance? Mr. Marino?
No further questions. Prepare to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Ms. Carson? Ms. Teeter?
Yes, Mr. Marino, if you would like to bring forward again the reason why you brought this forward in the beginning for the audience to hear, please, just briefly?
Absolutely. So what I've said all along is this is a cost-cutting measure in the legislative budget. We are... There is not a lot of predictability in terms of this elected officials' retirement fund. We have no gauge on how long people are living now. So over the years, we have continually appropriated more and more money into that fund in order to compensate for retiring elected officials. So this is coming as a cost-cutting measure for the legislative budget. It again entails that no previously elected official is affected by this. They are all grandfathered in. This only takes effect with this council moving forward, those that do not have the five years of qualifying service that serve right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now open for a motion, Mr. Marino?
Move to approve Ordinance 1873.
Ms. Carson?
Second.
I've had a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 764 Regarding the Elected Officials' Retirement System in the City of Commerce City."
Okay, I've had a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title. Request a roll call vote, please. Vote is nine yeses. Ordinance passes. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to study items. First one is a review of the results for the incentive program approved by resolution in 2010 and discussion of recommendations for the incentive program going forward. Mr. Flannery, would you like to invite staff up to make that presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to bring Brittany Morris, Economic Development Director, to make this presentation. As you know, we implemented this program after our business summit in January of 10, and in record time with the Business Advisory Committee brought this forward to council for approval in May of 10. And it's been in place ever since, so discussion is still warranted while the economic situation is what it is, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Let me just turn on this light. There we go. Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development, and I am pleased tonight to present to you the incentive program results and recommendations for a future program. As city manager Flannery alluded to, we did present this to you in April of 2010. It unanimously passed in May of 2010, and since that time, we have seen some tremendous results. We have received national attention for this program, both when city manager Flannery and myself traveled down to Atlanta to present to the Atlanta Regional Commission, as well as being featured in some national publications about the program. With that, the economy is still improving. So tonight, we will be presenting to you not only the results, but a recommendation to revise and to continue this program through December 31st of 2012. We have reviewed these results and recommendations with the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee and the Economic Development Business Advisory Committee. We actually reviewed that with them twice, and they have provided some great comments, some great suggestions that have been incorporated into this future program. And with that, I will run through the incentive program history, the incentive program results, and then, of course, the incentive program recommendations, and then take your questions and answers tonight. Tonight, you are not asked to officially approve this, but to provide your comment and questions, and we'll be bringing this back to you in November for an official vote. 2010, 2011 incentive program. What was our goal? Our goal was to positively impact all facets of the Commerce City economy, to create jobs, to encourage existing businesses to make new capital investments and market their business, spur new office, industrial, and residential development and growth, grow our target industry sectors, and to create new retail opportunities that reduce retail leakage. As you all know, the study that we completed in 2010 showed that $300 million worth of annual retail sales are leaking outside of our city into other cities. So this was... A goal of ours was to create new retail opportunities that reduce retail leakage, encourage new opportunities for people to live, work, and play in Commerce City. Continued our goals, become home to more renewable energy companies, and encourage energy-efficient building practices. For some of you, you'll notice this is part of the 2010 city council goals. We incorporated this into the program. And address the top needs and desires identified at the January 19th, 2010 Business and Development Summit. This was the first summit of its kind. We had over 100 businesses, existing and prospective, attend a session with the city manager where we asked them what we are doing right and where we can improve upon. And these were the top three needs and desires that they identified, not only that day, but also in a survey. Who was eligible under the program? Existing businesses, and this is any existing business in the city. Perspective businesses, we limited that to our target industries. Our five target industries are retail, hospitality, leisure, advanced manufacturing, logistics and distribution, business and professional services, and DIA technology. These were the target industries identified in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which you also unanimously passed in April of 2010. Existing retailers, because we identified the top two retail leakage categories as grocery and eating places, $59 million worth of annual grocery sales leaking into other cities, and 88 million of eating place sales annually leaking, we wanted to provide an incentive for our existing retailers who are capturing those dollars to market their business. And as you just approved, you just approved one, actually two, of our existing eating places that are providing that service tonight. Perspective retailers, we wanted to go above and beyond what we were offering to those businesses that are looking at providing those two necessary services, grocery and eating places. Home builders, incentivizing them to build more homes in Commerce City, and homeowners to make improvements to their homes. Projects of economic development significance, this is a program where if you do hire more than... Plan to hire more than 50 employees or invest more than $10 million in capital investments, you are eligible to receive above and beyond what the typical program has in it. Same goes for renewable energy companies and energy-efficient building. This provided for bonus for any renewable energy company wanting to do business in Commerce City, as well as those existing businesses or prospective businesses that wanted to incorporate energy-efficient building into their capital improvements. Here is a quick breakdown of what the 2010-11 C3 incentive package included, and I won't get into too many details here, but as you can see, it's a series of sales and use tax rebates and building fee rebates and incentives for job creation. What were our results? And I'm going to go through each category, first going through business, then we will go through home improvement, and then home building. Business incentives, 27 applications to date for... This is for new and in existing businesses. You have approved, as of tonight, $2.9 million in incentives to be paid to existing businesses and new businesses. Majority of applications came from existing businesses. That is... That was expected. We know that where we are going to get the new jobs are from our existing businesses. We believe in Commerce City economic development, that we have seen a good return on investment with this business incentive. We got our grocery store. That was a number-one priority as we were looking at the program. We lured a Fortune 500 company, Commons Rocky Mountain, to build the largest Thai horse diesel re-manufacturing center in the country in Commerce City. We created 565 new jobs, and 15 applicants of these 27 were from our target industry sectors, so we are growing our target industries. And four businesses out of the 27 are going to build green. So we look at this as a good return on investment. We break this down by category here, and just a couple of things that I'll point out. Projects of economic development significance, again, that's 50 or more employees or more than $10 million in capital investments. That is where the largest incentives were approved and the largest capital investments will be made. Existing retailers, we had seven existing grocers and eating places apply for this rebate out of 43 businesses that qualified. And this is not without effort of trying to reach out to these businesses, but as I'm sure some of you have been in the position of being eligible to receive a rebate, sometimes you don't fill out the paperwork. So we had seven businesses out of 43 take advantage of that. You will notice the majority of the businesses were existing businesses that received the business incentive. And the new retailer, you'll notice one here, and that is a grocer, that is Stellato's Grocery. So while the King Supers in the northern range is a project of economic development significance... significance, the one grocer we did get in as a result of the incentive program is that Results. Home improvement incentive. We received 830 applications from homeowners wanting to improve their homes. $69,569.07 are the amount of the incentives to be paid by the city to the homeowner. The majority of these applications were hailstorm-related. As you will recall, you passed this incentive agreement in May of 2010. Literally, 48 hours later, we had a major hailstorm. And thanks to you, we did decide, the council and the administration, that we would give our homeowners this benefit and this incentive for all of the repairs that they are... That they would complete on their homes. However, repairs heavily favored improvements, and improvements were the reason why we created this program. 2,700 homeowners were notified. Out of 2,700, we did have 830 applicants, and it took a lot of staff time and resources to process. So, here we say, "Not a great return on investment." It wasn't meeting our intention of the program, and it took a lot of staff time and resources to process these 830 applications. Home builder incentive. We had seven builders take advantage of our home builder incentive, which is the equivalent of about 180 new homes. $273,000 will be paid to home builders from the... From the home building incentive program. We put "not a great return on investment" on this one as well. This was a lot of money to incentivize. We took in about $846,000, and $273,000 of it will be rebated to home builders that, when interviewed, said they were going to build anyways. Home building activity is not only down in Commerce City, but is down in the entire U.S. Cash is the problem, not necessarily the rebate. We had the opportunity to sit down with the Metro Denver Home Builders Association, a group of about 20 home builders, and talk to them about our program. And while they said, "Yeah, that's nice. That's good," it didn't help them with that key, critical program... Problem facing the home builders today. And we have also had a conversation with Brighton, and Brighton had a similar program where they had cut building fees in half and also delayed the collection of those building fees to COO, Certificate of Occupancy, and they are looking at also eliminating this program. Now, I will go through the recommendations based on category. Future business incentive recommendations. First and foremost, we recommend eliminating the existing retailer incentive. This is that 5% rebate for the sales and use tax collected from grocers and restaurants in 2010. Only seven out of 43 businesses took advantage of this. We didn't have a huge return on investment, so we would make the recommendation to eliminate this part of the program moving forward. We would also ask that you revise the new retailer incentive to only apply to sit-down restaurants. This was the new retailer incentive for grocery and restaurants. Two things here. We got our grocery store, which was very exciting, and so we believe we can eliminate the grocer piece. The new retailer for sit-down restaurants. We have looked at the existing fleet, for lack of a better word, of our drive-throughs and our fast food. And we are making a recommendation that this only applies to sit-down restaurants, which does include fast casual. However, the fast food will not be eligible for this part of the program. Now, they are a retailer, so they will be eligible for the other piece of the program, but just not this above and beyond incentives, which is that 50%, the first and second year of sales and use tax rebates. Continue the green job and green building incentives. This continues to be our priority, and it is also noted not only in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, but also in the Comprehensive Plan. We would really appreciate your support in encouraging these types of businesses and these type of building to continue. Modified job creation incentive. We had a lot of dialogue with the Citizen Advisory Committee and the Business Advisory Committee about this. Currently, we were incentivizing both jobs above the average county wage, which the county wage is $41,747. We were also incentivizing jobs below the average county wage. The reason why we did that? We were trying to incentivize grocery and eating places. And typically, those jobs pay lower than the average county wage. In discussing with the Citizen Advisory Committee and the Business Advisory Committee, we are going to recommend that we only incentivize jobs that pay above the average county wage. That would be $500 for every new job created. We've also added $1,000 for every new job created that is filled by a Commerce City resident. We will be working with our businesses and with our auditing department to make sure that we are able to track these people who are our residents filling these jobs. But this is something that we talked to you about last year that we really wanted to incorporate in this year's program. Future business incentive recommendations continued. We had a lot of dialogue as well as to whether or not we should only incentivize new and existing businesses in our five target industries. Currently, we only incentivize new businesses in our target industries. However, we are able to incentivize any existing business. It doesn't matter your industry. After discussing with the Business Advisory Committee and the Citizen Advisory Committee, we believe it is very important for us to incentivize our target industries. This is how we are going to build our economy. This is our plan. This is our strategy. However, if we do have an existing business that is outside of the target industries wanting incentives, we will consider this on a case-by-case basis. We also had a suggestion to rename the projects of economic development significance. Again, this is any business above $10 million currently and anyone who creates 50 or more jobs. We had some Business Advisory Committee members that said, "Wait a second. I'm significant as well." So, we will be working with Michelle Halstedt and the Communications Department on renaming this part of the program. Lower capital investment threshold for the projects of economic development significance to $5 million. This was also a lot of discussion with the Business Advisory Committee. We had a number of businesses that bring in significant sales and use tax to our city that wanted to expand but did not reach that $10 million threshold. And as you know, we are home to a lot of small businesses in Commerce City. In fact, 75% of them have 10 people or less. So, we want... We would provide the recommendation to lower that capital investment threshold to $5 million, and we will keep the 50 employees or more for that project of economic development significance. Continued future business incentive recommendations. This is something else that we had a discussion with you last year and said we would take into consideration. We will provide an additional 10% sales and use tax and fee rebates if Commerce City vendors or contractors are used. This is if you're buying supplies from a Commerce City business or if you're using a Commerce City contractor. Incentives above $50,000 go before city council. All others administratively approved. We brought you a few incentive agreements this year that were less than $2,000, and we feel it's... We feel this $50,000 mark will be more spot-on in terms of the amount of the incentive that we need your approval. The administratively-approved incentives will be sent to you through a document so that you are able to track the amount of incentives that we are approving. Capital investments and jobs must be made created within 18 months of approval unless otherwise approved. This is a change we were asking our businesses to make those capital investments and to hire within 12 months. In having a dialogue with the Business Advisory Committee, we will be extending that to 18 months with your approval. New jobs must be maintained for two years, and the company must remain in Commerce City for two years. This is not a change, but we definitely wanted to make sure that that is known and strengthened. One more item for your consideration under future business incentive recommendations. We had one business take advantage of our program that was creating jobs only, no capital investments. And we ran into a little issue where that business is not bringing in the sales and use tax needed to cover that incentive. So, moving forward, we have a few options should we have a business come in that is only creating new jobs and not having a new capital investment, so they are not purchasing new equipment or expanding their business. We could allow for job creation incentive only and create a job creation incentive fund. To give you an idea, this business... The cost was about $10,000 for this business incentives. Allow for job creation incentive if the business is bringing in sales and use tax revenues to cover the rebate. This is essentially money in, money out. Or, we will make it mandatory that the job creation incentives must be tied to capital improvements. No fund is necessary here, and again, it is that money in, money out in terms of the rebate. So, that will be something to discuss after I present the next two slides. Future home improvement incentive recommendations. We want to rename this program as well to make sure that people know this is something we're trying to beautify Commerce City. So, maybe Commerce City Beautiful, or something to that extent. We'll work with Michelle on that. Exclude acts of God in home repairs. Again, this program was not instituted for repairs. It really was for... To give our residents a reason to improve our homes. Program only applicable to improvements that cause you to pull a building permit. This is that money-in, money-out rebate situation again that I just explained. Promote the Weekend Warrior Program. That used to be called Fast Lane Fridays. This is something where a homeowner can come in and work with our permit technicians and our building department on getting a permit the same afternoon. Provide additional 10% rebate for using Commerce City vendors and contractors. Again, this is a part of the conversation we had with you last year. We definitely want to make sure we are providing that additional rebate for using vendors and contractors from Commerce City. Improvements must be completed within one year of approval. That is not a change, but just wanted to stress it. Future home builder incentive recommendations. As I said before, this is one of those things where we're trying to solve a problem with the wrong mechanism. Discontinue this part of the program is what we are recommending to city council, and instead, we want to promote the home improvement incentive, especially to those that are looking at improving foreclosed properties, both the inside and the outside. Work with local HUD office on reinvestment in foreclosed homes. This is something that is part of Obama's jobs bill, is a lot of money could potentially be coming to Colorado for the local HUD office to distribute to improve foreclosed homes in the metro area, and we would like to take full advantage of that should it pass. Meet with the Metro Denver Home Builders Association and local builders on ways Commerce City can assist the industry in their recovery. We've talked a lot amongst staff about potentially setting up a panel or focus group and really talking to the industry, and specifically our builders in Commerce City, on the ways that the city can help them. And continuing marketing Commerce City residential communities to existing and prospective employers. We always provide this information when we are talking to a prospective employer, but we need to do a better job of getting out to our existing companies and promoting residential opportunities to them. Other recommendations we had by the Business Advisory Committee and the Citizen Advisory Committee that we would like to review for the rest of the year. Backing CAC recs to be explored. Incentives for workforce training and educational attainment by our businesses. Down payment assistance fund. This is something the Housing Authority did do, but it might be something to be re-explored. Small business loan fund. This is also something that is noted in the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We would like to continue to explore that and possibly provide a recommendation next year as you are going through budget. Revisit home building incentives. Like I said, working with our home building community to find out what it will really take to incentivize builders. Next steps. I look forward to your comments and questions tonight. We will have a council resolution prepared for you for November 7th, and then the new program will go into effect November 15th. Six-month review by city council after the 15th, and the expiration of this program we are recommending December 31st of 2012. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry. One last thing. I would like to thank Michelle Hill, who has done a tremendous job with this program. If you have any and all questions about it, she has been eating, living, breathing this thing since April of 2010, so I just really want to thank her for her leadership and her assistance. Thank you.
Ready for questions?
I am.
Ms. Snyder?
Not a question, but a comment. Brittany, I know that you know that this whole project has been near and dear to my heart, and I have just been honored to be here throughout the whole process. Your team has done a phenomenal job. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you all of the people in your department. And I just... I think this program is so exciting, and it's so innovative, and it's just, you know, it's just really, really done great things for the community. And having the grocery store, yay! I mean, I know we're still getting... Jumping up and down, and I told the city manager I'll be jumping up and down all the way through until it's built, opened, and everybody's in it. So, I just want to say thank you to you and the team. I love the program. I will be supportive of it forever. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Do you see me? Oh. Brittany, thank you so much for this presentation. This is exactly what we need and what we're asking for, and to cut some of the dead leaves off the tree actually works better because those are the things that if you've... We've had it this long, and we see they don't work. No use extending them and just have them as part of something, and nobody's paying attention to it. One of the things I wanted to ask...
Yes.
Do we still have the employee assistance plan for buying a home in Commerce City with the forgivable loan?
Yes.
Okay. On your slide on page 167, "Questions for City Council: Allow for Job Creation Incentive Only or Create a Job Creation Incentive Fund?" I understand where you're going. I just don't understand where you're going. I... Could you just break that down a little bit more so I understand both of those terms?
Absolutely. So, as I referenced, we had one business since April 2010 that only applied for the job creation incentive. All of the other ones were associated with another form of the program. So, it was... We were getting sales and use tax from those businesses and then rebating it back, or we're getting fees in, and then we were rebating it back. In this specific instance, and we anticipate that there may be other instances where a business only applies for the job creation incentive, but yet they're not bringing in enough sales and use tax with their daily operation to cover that incentive amount. So, the question then becomes, where are you getting the money?
Okay. Now, I understand exactly where you were going with that. In regards to the businesses that... We know we have a lot of businesses. I worked for one that I truly do believe would benefit greatly from this, and I don't think they've ever sent in anything, and I'm going to start lobbying over there again until they tell me to shut up. But what do you think is the breakdown there? Why a lot of these businesses... It can be just because of paperwork. Is it just because... I'm asking you this, so I'm not going to speculate.
Well, I will say, in terms of promoting the program to our existing businesses, we had a number of different strategies there. We did promote it not only in the city news, but in our monthly economic development newsletter. We did direct mailing to the homeowners for the homeowner incentive. We also did direct mailing, direct emails, direct contact with our existing retailers to take advantage of that 5%. Again, we've all been there. Sometimes, you just don't do it. So, you don't apply for the rebate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Carson?
Brittany, thank you. You've done a wonderful job. The things that I hit on was this... We created 500... You guys created 565 new jobs in the city? That is fabulous. Compared... I don't know what other cities have, but I can't imagine that this is not a shining star. So...
It is absolutely, and it's something that, as long as we can have that number ingrained and we continue to promote it, the 565 new jobs is definitely something unique to the region. And just one other point on that. It's not only 565 new jobs, but it's businesses that are going to make $65 million worth of capital investments in our community.
That's amazing. And I love the idea of this... The $1,000 if you use one of our citizens that you put to work, that put Commerce City to work, and this incentives for workforce training. I think that is something that would be fabulous.
Absolutely, and thank you for that. We plan to have a lot of dialogue with our workforce partners and with Adams County on that piece, and that's why we didn't bring you a formal recommendation, but look forward to having that dialogue for the next year.
Yeah. Everything you've done with this has just been wonderful. The results are here to show. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno? Mr. Moreno?
Brittany, a couple of questions. You know, Councilwoman Carson mentioned the 565 new jobs created, and that's great. I was wondering if you had the breakdown of above or below county wage of those 565?
I don't have that on me, but I will email that to you before the 7th.
Great, thank you. And then, you know, one of the proposals that you're looking at is to only incentivize those businesses that fit in our target industries? I think that's a smart step, but I was looking at the numbers, and only 15 of the 27 that applied were actually in our target industry. Do you perceive that that will affect that job creation figure? Because there are businesses that did not fall within the target industry that did create jobs, so I just want to get your perspective on that.
Good question. We had this dialogue as well with the Citizen Advisory Committee and Business Advisory Committee, and looking at that 15, we felt that was, that was a great number. You know, we knew it was not going to be 100%, but we're willing to put our money on our target industries because that is the plan, that is the strategy, and that was the dialogue that we had. Like I said up there, if we do have an existing business that would still like to take advantage of our incentive program that is not part of our target industries, we will be evaluating a number of factors in terms of how long have they been in the city? What type of revenue do they generate? How, what types of services do they potentially provide to our residents? We'll be evaluating a number of different factors, and I anticipate we will still be bringing before you a number of existing businesses that do not fall within that target industry.
Thank you for that clarification, and just where the audience's benefit, most of the existing businesses in Commerce City, I think, would fall within the target industry considering that we include manufacturing and warehousing and those items in there. And then, I really liked the provision about additional 10% sales and use tax rebate if they utilize Commerce City contractors or vendors. And I was just wondering, is there a secondary element to that in that we will have a resource available for them in order to see which Commerce City businesses they would like to buy from?
Very good question. We, at this year's Business and Development Summit, we talked to our businesses about providing that service, not only for Commerce City vendors, but also for our business community at large. What are the services that, what are the services and goods that they sell that we could promote? And we have been working with marketing and communications on that, and hope to have some, something for you in the future.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mackelney?
I think Mr. Moreno stole a few of my questions, so I won't, I won't repeat them. Just bottom line, I think the story here is phenomenal. It was an amazing program out of the gate. It continues to evolve. I think the input of the citizen and the business advisory committees is great to help refine the program. And I think, again, as Mr. Bullock suggested, trimming some of those dead leaves, narrowing the focus and putting our money where we really want to see the investment payoff to help achieve that long-term vision. And I think that's a great, great step forward. The suggested additions and refinements just seem to make great sense, and hopefully will help us continue to make traction, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Teeter?
Good evening. Thank you, and Michelle, and the rest of your staff for all your hard work. This is a very positive program. I have a few things. The business that Mr. Bullock brought up about it was only the job creation program only and was not getting any use tax or sales tax. Did you want an answer tonight on which direction?
Just general thoughts?
I would like the last one must be tied with capital investments? I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. Secondly, 2.9 million is to be paid for the incentives. That's a total amount?
Hmm?
Okay. And you said that good returns for the investment of the dollar. When do you expect these returns to take place? And I know it's going to take years for the process to, you know, get started and going.
The program currently stipulates that capital investments must be made within a year of city council approval, and new jobs must be made within a year and maintained for two years. And so we will have immediate tangible results relatively soon. As I recommended, we, I am recommending that we increase that from 12 months to 18 months because we received a lot of feedback from businesses, especially in this economy, saying it's going to take them a little bit longer to make these capital investments. And those projects of economic development significance, it did give us the flexibility to say it didn't have to be done within a year. But luckily, some of our big projects, such as Cummins and King Supers, we didn't really have that problem.
Well, I like those stipulations, and possibly 18 months may be more effective. And lastly, I was also impressed with the $500 for the higher-paying jobs and $1,000 if they hired people that lived in Commerce City. And also the vendors, it looks like you're pushing Commerce City into this, which I'm really in favor of, just to let you know. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Brittany. And I do agree, that was a lot of information, and I agree with Councilwoman Teeter on capital improvements. My question is, as you did touch on retail leakage, and I believe you mentioned a percentage of the retail leakage that we experienced in Commerce City, and I think we missed it. Did you throw that percentage out there, and I missed it?
Well, it's $300 million annually, 59 million grocery sales, 88 million in eating places.
Okay. Do you know how that compares to other cities or other areas?
I actually do not, but we're happy to look into it.
Okay, just out of curiosity.
They don't, some of our neighboring communities don't share that information. So we will try our best.
Okay, thanks. And have we also, I think it's great that we're focusing on sit-down restaurants and providing them incentives. Have we thought about increasing the incentives to a specific type of restaurant that we're targeting?
That was a lot of dialogue with the Citizen Advisory Committee, and we did not specify the type of sit-down, the type of food served at the sit-down restaurant, if that's what you're referencing.
Right.
No, we decided to move forward with just sit-down restaurant, and that sit-down restaurant includes fast casual. So that does include the Garbanzos. It does include the Panera Bakery. That is the fast casual, and a lot of the retail development that's taking place today is fast casual, as opposed to sit-down.
Okay. And I guess it's just kind of a reference to Councilman Moreno's mom basically threatening him if an Applebee's doesn't come here, so.
Applebee's is in there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Yes, that's, that's no secret. I hear about it every day. But I was curious, Brittany, on the small, small business loan program, that's something I think is really exciting and will obviously be following, I think, a lot of what we're doing here. But do you have any idea of what that might look like, or would that be something for the citizens group to decide or business group?
Angelo Economics recommended that we do an in-depth study of what other municipalities in the metro area are doing in terms of small business loans. If it, we also need to look at staff resources and time. There might be an opportunity here to partner with another entity to administer the program. So it's something we will be researching and looking into, and then providing a recommendation. We will need an initial startup fund, so that's why it's very important that we do all of our research before we bring you any recommendation in terms of funding a program of that nature.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Brittany, I want to thank you and your staff for the work that you've done to make this incentive program come to life, so to speak, and I want to pass on a comment that I've been getting a lot of recently, and that is, quote, "Thanks for the King Supers."
Thank you. No, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Do you need anything from us? Just an okay to go ahead?
Well, I received a few of you were recommending that the, if it is a business that comes in and only has job creation incentives, that it does need to be tied to that capital investment, so it's a money in, money out situation. Is that the general consensus?
Seems like it, but Mr. Mackelney?
And sorry, I didn't specify, but absolutely. And I think the suggestions on the various funds are a great item to include in our strategy, our planning discussions at the top of the year, and ultimately the budget discussion, to see if there's a way to fund those and how those might sustain, almost like a seed capital fund to help in that, in that sort of capacity. I think that's a great idea. I just needed a better understanding of how we might fund it, how it would sustain, what we think the return on that might be. So, thank you.
Seeing no one else, I think you're okay to go. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Mr. Flannery? We're now going to go on to Mile High Greyhound Park redevelopment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to have Jim Hayes, Community Development Director, start this off with a number of staff presenting.
Good evening, sir. Get this going in the right direction here. Sorry about that. Rookie mistake, right? Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Wanted to introduce also Mizrum Cordero, Brittany Morris, and Michelle Hall, who are going to assist me with this presentation, because it really has been a team effort to this point. As you might imagine, it's been kind of all hands on deck since the URA purchased the dog track back in August. Right after the purchase, several city departments started meeting under the direction of the city manager, who's also the executive director, of course, of the Urban Renewal Authority. And I wanted to run through just a couple of slides, really for the benefit of the public, to provide some context here. The Urban Renewal Authority, of course, is a branch of the city dedicated to redeveloping slum and blighted areas. And as I've explained at the citizen outreach, I don't really like the term blighted, but we're obligated under state law to use that word. City council is the governing body of the URA, with council members serving as the board of directors, and the mayor serves as the chair. This property, again, is one of five key redevelopment locations in the city. The city or the URA was able to purchase without affecting reserves or funds for daily operations. Purchase price of more than $2 million below the asking price of 5.5 million. Mark Goldberg, who assisted us in the purchase of the property, is also assisting us as an owner's representative as of this month, which is helping us navigate through the process. Immediately after the purchase, the city manager's office organized a dog track organizational group to develop a property management strategy, and this involved removal of all the paying tenants, security for the building and the grounds, also some short-term and long-term maintenance for the property. Communications Infrastructure Group was retained to implement the public outreach efforts, and a planning subcommittee was formed a short term afterwards, and we've been meeting weekly to coordinate these redevelopment plans and the public outreach efforts. And I do want to give special thanks to Parks and Public Works, which are not necessarily presenting tonight, but they've been integral in getting the property up to speed and getting it maintained and getting us where we are today. So I'm going to turn over to Michelle for the next two really quick, and then we'll go to some of the blight study items.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, or the Urban Renewal Authority Board. I'm not sure which one we are today. Neither. So we've actually, if you recall, when we announced the, the purchase of the dog track, we also announced a series of six community meetings. And you'll recall that getting community input was deemed essential because you all had purchased this property to drive their own destiny, and it was an important parcel to the community. We've actually had 11 meetings so far. We've had four large meetings that 138 residents and businesses have attended, and then we've also done seven targeted meetings, primarily to our Hispanic population, because we've learned that that's, these large meetings aren't necessarily the place that they feel comfortable in providing input. And 174 members of our community have attended to date. So we've had 312 meetings, or 312 attendees, rather, come to 11 meetings, and that's really phenomenal when you think about the level of outreach and engagement we have. One of the things that we're doing is this funnel concept. So if you see the slide, we're looking for the public to give us a full range of input. And at the meetings to date, we've seen some common themes. Certainly, one of the themes we've heard is that roadway improvements need to be made to connect the community and connect the property. We've also heard desire for focus on higher density developments on the west side of the property, and then transitioning to more of mixed-use residential to complement the Boys and Girls Club towards the east. We've also heard a desire for open space, some type of community town center, and we've certainly heard a lot about trails and recreation and other activities. There's certainly many, many more ideas, but those are some of the common themes we have heard to date. And in December, we will be presenting the full outcome of all the public outreach we've done with the URA board. And all of that work through the funnel will then be going and looking at market viability. So the planning group and some other folks will be looking at all of the ideas and kind of squeezing them through that funnel to see what remains viable, and ultimately developing a concept plan based on what's economically feasible. We have several future meetings. November 8th and November 16th are the large-scale meetings. One will be held at the Rec Center, and one will be held at the Civic Center. And then we have three more additional targeted outreach meetings to date, and then again, December 12th will be presenting the summary of the public outreach. I will say, when we undertook this, we did a pretty robust communications plan, and we've been very successful in keeping this project in the spotlight and securing earned media all along the way. So the earned media, coupled with the meetings, coupled with our social media, we've been able to keep this project at the forefront of many people's minds. And now I'll turn it back over to Jim to talk about the blight study.
Might be asking, why do we need to prepare a new blight study? City staff and the city attorney met to determine if we should do a new blight study on this property. We determined that when this property was brought into the urban renewal area in 1998, a sales tax incentive was the only one that was created. So we really look at this as an opportunity. We're going to be able to do a new blight study, new urban renewal plan, and use a property tax incentive as a potential financing tool or a way to fill the gap in the market when we ultimately redevelop the property. That is going to lead into completion of the blight study probably by December for presentation at your meeting. Happy to report, we're going to be able to do that with in-house staff in the planning department. There'll be no outside consultant needed for that. We will not necessarily be asking for formal approval at that point. It'd probably come back for some findings for you to adopt in January. That will lead into a sub-area plan. We're going to target summer of 2012 to have that completed. It would include the things that you see there, market feasibility, some land use concepts, as well as some transportation elements. And then, once we have a formal developer partner, we would then formalize that into an urban renewal plan meeting the state statute. So we think of all these processes, they're really going to build on themselves. I threw 2013 up there. I think, you know, optimistically, it'd be great if we could have something squared away by the end of next year, but I wanted to be realistic and put 2013 up there. Next thing I wanted to do is hand this over to Mizrum to explain a little bit about the Boys and Girls Club, and then we'll have Brittany wrap it up and be able to answer some questions.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Just a very brief update on where we are with Boys and Girls Club. After we received direction from city council, and we had a press conference outside of the Civic Center to announce some of the offerings that we would make to Boys and Girls, that the city would make to Boys and Girls Club, to entice them to build a new expansion facility on the southeast, south, what is that? Hold on. That's the southeast corner of the, of the site. We met with, we made a formal meeting with the Boys and Girls Clubs on September 26th, where we went over again over the offerings that we made, that were announced during the, the press release, and then we also discussed some of their possible concerns. We explained to them that we had contacted HUD, and that the appropriation that has been assigned for a construction and for design costs for the for construction and for design costs for the building is also available. As far as next steps, the Boys and Girls Club is putting together the first draft of an agreement for construction, which they will present to the city for review with our attorneys and for additional negotiations. Once that has been agreed upon, then we will, then they'll proceed with starting the design and elevations for the, for the building, which will then allow them to go on to create a fundraising plan, which will include City Council as well. And that's it as far as Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, going to talk a little bit about the Economic Development Administration grant. A little over a year ago, we had applied for this through the Federal Economic Development Administration. It's part of the Department of Commerce. We applied for an EDA grant for $70,000, which included a requirement for a $70,000 match. At the time, EDA said, "Great project, but you need to own it." And little did we know, a few months later, that happened. So now we are back in the running for the EDA grant for $70,000, which included a requirement for $70,000 match, total of $140,000 available for market feasibility and sub-area planning. This is going to be very important as we look at the market feasibility of the site, and what types of users and uses we are looking at. This, we are anticipating a response in first quarter of 2012, if not by the end of the year. The wonderful news is, we have made it to that next round, which is the closest round to being approved, so we hope to be bringing you something very soon. We, I do want to quickly thank Lisa Wayne in my office for her leadership on this, as well as Brian Garner in planning, and Leanne Noel in grants. Another parallel track is the NAOP Real Estate Challenge. NAOP is the Commercial Real Estate Association for the Denver metro area. We were selected about a month ago to be this year's NAOP Real Estate Challenge topic. What this means is CU and DU MBA candidates will compete over our topic. This will be their capstone. It will be their project that they study for the next six months. We will kick off things at the Civic Center in January of next year with the students. This will be an opportunity for us to host a number of industry-focused groups, for the students to take a tour of the site, and also for us, as the sponsor, to have a networking opportunity with the students and the faculty of both schools. We will also have, and this is the, this is the reason why we do it, is May 2nd, 2012 is an awards dinner where over 700 developers and brokers are introduced to our project. And this is where the final teams, the top teams of DU and CU compete against each other. And I believe that CU's only won once, unfortunately. But DU has won nine times. This is the 10th anniversary, so it's also a wonderful way for us to get some earned media on this project. And, interesting enough, that that happens May 2nd, because later that month, we will be going to International Council of Shopping Centers, and a wonderful opportunity for us to get in front of local, national, and international developers, retail developers for the site. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to Jim.
Okay, thank you. And again, we're planning on doing these updates probably about every 60 days. I think that's probably good timing. It gives us a chance to keep the wheels moving, and we're open for any questions here tonight. Okay?
Mr. Benson? Mr. Benson?
Thank you. You know, this is, with the planning that's going into this, we're going to wind up with something that's great, I think. So I'm just looking forward to it. On the Boys and Girls Club, the last that I heard, we were giving them two acres?
That's correct.
Is that two acres for just the building, or two acres for the parking for the building? Or what is the two acres going to include?
My understanding of the meetings I've been in, and they're just going to need two acres for their site, which would include their parking and maybe ancillary ball fields, could be larger than that. But it'll be at least two acres.
At least two acres? So what?
We are, we are actually, we've, we've agreed with them, and the agreement that they're submitting is going to be two acres. I think if there's parking spillover, I think with some of the surrounding land use, there may be some ability to have additional parking on some surrounding properties.
But you're planning to have parking and, like, a baseball field on two acres, plus a building for the Boys and Girls Club?
They requested two acres. That's what we agreed to. They requested it. We didn't suggest it. They requested it.
Did you discuss that with them at all? How are you going to do this on two acres?
I believe all along that they were looking for ball fields as part of their site, as well as the building and structure. So two acres was what they requested, and that's what we agreed to.
You know, let me just, as a basis of comparison, the inside of the King Supers is going to be three acres. Is that correct? So this would be, this whole area will be 2/3 the size of the interior of the King Supers that we're building. Is that a correct statement?
That's probably correct.
Yeah.
Two and a half.
It is probably correct. I think it is correct. But, thank you.
Ms. Teeter?
Thank you all for the presentation this evening. Unfortunately, I have not been able to attend those citizen advisory meetings on what's to be placed there. Other than the Boys and Girls Club, has any citizen showed any interest for retail, commercial, sit-down restaurants, to have the citizens take advantage of, and also to generate some tax dollars to bring back for this investment the city made?
Absolutely. All of the above. We think that, just from a planning perspective, I mean, you want to have traffic count, so you know, the western half of the site makes the most sense for retail. That's going to generate sales tax. You could have other opportunities for office, multifamily, single-family, mixed-use. That's really the purpose of that feasibility study, if we can get that grant from the Department of Commerce, is to try to really vet all those ideas and try to flush them out before we start putting together a concept plan. But definitely, the residents have brought up all of those ideas.
Mr. Bullock?
I have attended every one of the meetings, and at the last meeting on the Saturday, I had to actually persuade the people that I work for, they need to be there, because that corridor, 64th Avenue, between where the dog track is and the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, is going to be one of our most important corridors, connecting those two entities. And I told them that, in order to have a voice in how it's going to look and affect your business, you need to be at the table and give them your suggestions. At all the meetings I've been to, all I've done is been a quiet listener, because as city council, we aren't supposed to bring forth any of our ideals. We're just supposed to stay in the background and listen. But I've heard some ideals that are absolutely some of the best I've ever heard, and then I've heard some, I've heard some that, I will leave it at that, okay? But they've been really well-attended, and they've been very, a lot of people have thought out, have been very thoughtful with their ideals. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about the actual process. You know, I think it's great that we were selected for the NAOP Challenge. Will those students that are working on this challenge, will they be provided with the feedback that our citizens give during the public meetings?
Yes. In fact, we've invited them to attend on December 12th. We don't know how many students will actually make it, but some of the NAOP committee members may attend. We also intend to provide them the written report that we get from CIG. And one of the other components that Mr. Goldberg had recommended, that we're trying to weave into this process, is these focus groups at the kickoff event in January, where we can actually start bringing in some professionals, developers, brokers, people from the capital markets, to try to give the students a real-world information, as opposed to maybe have they done in some years past, where it's been more of a design competition. We really want them to try to get into the economics of it to make something work.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address some of that. This is a, you know, this is exciting all around. I mean, what a dilemma to have. What do we do with 65 acres in the heart of the city? And it's such a refreshing opportunity, because if you look at these segments of the planning process, we're having the citizens' component that's going to feed into the NAOP component, which both of those will feed into a study component and a sub-area plan. And sub-area plan, you might, maybe another term is a PUD, or, you know, a specific area plan, that I've heard it called before, where all of the property will be analyzed. And the goal through the NAOP process was that, as a 10-year project, that they actually have a, you know, the last nine years, they've done some great projects. And somebody's, nobody's going to take anything away from that process. But one of the things that we tried to drive home with, with all the groups this year was that, as NAOP takes this in their 10th year anniversary, that we really try to make this plan a workable plan, and not so much academic. Now, maybe we get there, maybe we don't. But in that academic process, there may be significant elements out of that process that fit in with what the citizens want, with what, what the end studies are going to say, so that we can actually have a marketable plan that's going to bring in some retail, but also some public uses. One of the things I wanted to mention was that you all received an email, I think this morning or last night. There's a lot of hard work that went into that proposal. Staff probably has a half a dozen of those stories, where individuals have rolled up their sleeves, sat at their dinner tables in their house, and drew up a plan, and sent it in from across the region, because they have a, have a history with the dog track, and they, they care about it. And so I think there's been some good ideas, colleges, hospitals. I think the whole gamut is out there. So it's an opportunity to really see what, what might actually be the best use for it. And I think this process is going to make that doable.
Thank you. And I also had a question. I've gotten a couple of questions about what the reasoning was behind the Urban Renewal Authority removing the tenants that were there. Were we collecting tax revenue from those tenants, or was that kind of a wash?
Well, I think, let me, let me, I, I'm, I'll try to put it straight out. It may have cost more to have them in that facility than it would to get the lease money back out of them. Because if you recall, there's some significant roof damage. There's significant leakage from heating and cooling. So it's really a maintenance issue, a liability issue. I think the prior owners were really wanting to see whatever money they could make out of this property and get, get whatever they could, whether it be a carnival in the parking lot or tenants. Not to say that it was dangerous, it was just more of a, of a, of a economic, financial drain to keep somebody in there.
Thank you. And just one more question. I understand the importance of having a plan in place before we begin anything on this project, but are there any short-term plans to improve mobility around the site, or will that come as a natural progression from the plan?
I might kick it to Jim, but I think there was certainly a desire, from my office's standpoint, to maybe look at a connection. But there's so many other issues that roll into that. And then you're talking about fencing off the other properties. You're talking about other access points. What we tried to do as an immediate sign to the community that we were there, is that we trimmed all the trees and made it really visible, and really cleaned up the property. The parking lot, I think, we're still working on, but I think we did put some roundup on the weeds that were there. But I think there's still a work in progress. But absolutely, that was a desire, and I think I even floated that out to some staff. And there were some real significant logistical issues there. But I think that's, first and foremost on our mind, is connectivity.
Great. And I lied. One more question. I was curious about, I think I forgot it already, actually. Actually, I wanted to, no, I forgot it. I'm going to come back. Thanks.
Mr. McElhany?
I think I forgot my question as well. No, I think the, you know, as I reflect on the update, and particularly the 10th anniversary of the NAOP Challenge, and this progression of activity that's building, it's a really rare alignment of factors that we have at play here. And I think it's easy to sort of get sucked into just thinking about what to do on this property, but it's, I think, important to really kind of acknowledge how rare all of these elements are. To have the community support for the transformation that's, the potential that exists with this transformation, to have the NAOP Challenge now, to help sort of building block this into really the ultimate possible outcome, as opposed to some sort of compromise of things. It's just an exceptional opportunity for us. And I think, I'm just really excited to see how the input continues to build, how the NAOP participants are able to take the input from the community. And it's great to hear about the wide-ranging input that we're getting, and how that will shape their ultimate presentations. I'm eager to see what, what they bring forward. I mean, as you mentioned earlier, the presentation that was put together that we received today, I mean, if there are more of those out there, I would just love to be able to, you know, get our hands on them. I don't know if there's any opportunity for, you know, sometimes seeing ideas gives other people even better ideas. And so if there's any potential for some of these ideas that are coming through to sort of be made available for folks to reflect on or build on, would be another neat way to potentially help generate more in the way of brainstorming. But thank you, guys.
Mr. Moreno?
I remembered it. I had a question about, you know, one of the proposals in your presentation is utilization of tax increment financing. And TIF is not without its controversy. How vital is using TIF to the future development of this project?
Well, I think, I agree. It is not without controversy. The Urban Renewal Authority, or Urban Renewal Law, if you will, seems to get changed every year by the legislature because of that. I think the big thing we wanted to look at is that, to try to have as another tool in the toolbox. And updating the blight study is something we needed to do anyway. I think it's important to identify all the possible financing sources. If we don't need to use it, we won't. But I think we want to get, get the pieces in place before we, before we just foreclose that opportunity.
And I would add to that, that it's, as Jim mentioned, it's a, another tool in the box. I think what it does is it allows you to possibly market it to, to development in an easier way, where, let's say, you know, we say, in the URA hat, you, you know, this is what it costs the URA, and we have an obligation to pay the city back for this cost. Maybe one of the ways they can do that is through a TIF, instead of just cash out of their pocket. And so it's, it's a tool that actually allows that development to occur, where maybe in another situation, if we didn't have that, they'd say, "No, okay, we can't. It's too rich. We can't do that."
Thanks for the info.
Looks like the last, I think, oops, there's more.
Just a quick comment on that and a plug. We are cosponsoring an event, Commerce City Economic Development, with ICSC, with International Council of Shopping Centers, right here in council chambers on the 29th of November, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. that will be in regards to urban renewal. We are going to have a panel of experts that talk about urban renewal projects in the metro area, what has worked, what has not, and their recommendations for the dog track redevelopment as well. I invite all of you to attend that, as well as our community. This is open to our businesses, to our residents, and is something we're very excited about. Thank you. November 29th, 6:00 to 8:00 in this room.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item under Council Business will be a discussion and action regarding initiation and recruitment of a city manager. This past week, on Tuesday, the council got, well, most of the council, well, all the council received the notification. I imagine most of us were, let's say, more than I imagine most of us were, let's say, more than a little disappointed that Mr. Flannery has decided to go on to greener pastors and will be leaving us on his date presently now, it's December 2nd. Because there's Council Policy Number 9, and what we wrote that one for is to reduce the timeline to look for a hiring process for a city manager. And I just want to read that. It says, "Upon termination of the city manager, acceptance of the city manager's resignation or receipt of a letter of resignation by the city manager," and the receipt of the letter is actually what I'm going on, "the mayor shall schedule a meeting of the council within five business days to initiate procedures and to actively conduct a recruitment to replace the city manager." According to that, I see that there are two items on that particular council policy that we needed to do. And the first one was that myself, as the mayor, needed to schedule a meeting with the council within five business days. Being that it was Tuesday, I called Mr. Gaylor the following day, and within five days would be this Monday, and that's why it's on the agenda right now. The second part of this says to actively conduct a recruitment to replace the city manager. Because we are three weeks away from having a new council, it would seem, especially when you look at this council and say there are only four spots that are guaranteed to be here in three weeks, it would not be, I think, in either the city or the new council's best interest to actually, actually start to do anything to recruit a new city manager. One of the things that we could do to at least make it appear that we are actively conducting a recruitment is if this council were to refer to staff to say, in the next three weeks or four weeks, if staff could start looking at locating headhunter companies, not contacting, not, but not asking for bids, not doing any of those types of things, but just to get references from other cities or whatever it would be, I think, and I'd have to go to Mr. Gaylor after this, to say, is this, would this match that actively conducting a recruitment And Mr. Gaylor, I'll go to you first, and then I've got a few people that are up here.
The answer to that question is certainly yes, because what the council needs to do this evening is to indicate a plan of action to where you want to proceed from here. That's what you need to do. It doesn't mean you have to go out and make any requests for proposals or anything of that nature at this stage, but you need to take some steps to show that you are recognizing the letter of resignation and that you are proceeding to do something about it.
Okay. And I can't imagine that there would be anybody out there or on this council who would have objection to letting this be handled by the next council, especially, as I stated before, there's only four guaranteed seats here in three weeks. Mr. Moreno.
I mostly agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor. I do think that the actual replacement for Mr. Flannery, and congratulations on your new adventure, Mr. Flannery, the actual replacement, I think, should rest with the new council. I do think, however, that this council has experience working with the staff. And so what I would advocate for and what I would like to see this council do, actually, is to indicate someone, an acting city manager, after Mr. Flannery leaves. I think that should be a decision for this council, because we do have the experience in working with staff. I think it's a bit of an unfair situation to put a new council member in, considering that they haven't had the most interaction with staff in the past. So that's what I would like to see. But I do also want to ask that, and it was a very good suggestion given to me, that as part of this process in selecting a new city manager, that we do somehow informally, based on Ms. Halsted, Michelle Halsted's professional recommendation, that we do advocate, or, sorry, we do solicit some input from city staff on the selection of a new city manager. I think that would go a long way in terms of establishing trust in the process, considering that the city manager is the head administrative officer of the city. And I think we would value the input, however it may come, from city staff.
Okay. My only comment on your suggestion, and I do understand what you're saying about this particular council picking the alternative for after Mr. Flannery leaves, which right now is December 2nd, the challenge would be if that person is not acceptable to the new council. I think we've all heard the rumors of the direction that the new council may take, depending on who gets elected. My fear, what I would not want to do is for the nine of us to pick someone, and then on the 17th or the 24th of November, that new council says, we don't care what the old council says, you're now either out of work or back to your old job or whatever, which could be a challenge.
If I could respond real quick.
Back to you, Mr. Moreno.
And that could very well happen. I guess the point is that this acting city manager would not formally assume the role until December 2nd, Mr. Flannery's last day. So if the new council coming on does disagree with our decision, they have every right to select someone else. You know, and the other benefit that I didn't mention is that that would give sufficient time for Mr. Flannery to begin to counsel a new person into the role, which I think would be a smoother transition.
And realizing that you're using the December 2nd, that, I could go along with that. My fear was we would have somebody do it now and then...
No. I was speaking of after Mr. Flannery vacates office.
Yeah, I would have no problem with that. Mr. Mackel Downey.
All right, thank you. And first to Mr. Flannery, very, very best wishes in your next chapter. Appreciate all you've done for us over the past four and a half years. I think time will certainly tell the true merit of your time here, and we appreciate, again, everything you've done for us. As we sit down to undertake the effort to find a suitable replacement, obviously, that's not going to be a task that happens overnight, and it certainly does make sense that that be undertaken by the new council. But I think to simply throw it to the new council in full, to kind of borrow from Mr. Moreno's comments, does a disservice to the perspective that this council brings. We obviously have council members here that have been on for, it will have been eight years by the time your terms end. And for several of us, we participated in the hiring of Mr. Flannery. And I think there's value in the reflections that come from that experience and from thinking about the vision that we have collectively established for at least the near term of the city and what the character of a city manager should be. And so without saying that this council needs to make the decision, because I think that's inappropriate, what I would ask and challenge this council to do is to reflect on things that they think would be valuable in a replacement city manager, given what you know, your deep knowledge about the community, about where we've come, about where we sit, and about where you believe we'd be going. I think that would be very helpful as a baton pass, if you will, to the council coming on. They can choose to ignore it, they can choose to reflect on it, but I think it would be of high value to take time for folks that are departing, for all of us frankly, to document those thoughts. I think also to Mr. Vitale's comments about having staff at least start to put together a list of potential firms that we could use in the search. I mean, there are two things that come to mind. Not only firms that can help facilitate that search, but also do some homework for us in advance of the new council coming on board, to give us a range of what costs are for a search of this nature. I mean, when I looked at municipalities, I mean, there's a million city manager positions out there right now. And when you look at what the estimated costs are, depending on the size of the city, you're talking anywhere between $30,000 to $100,000, depending on how robust a search process you're looking at, traveling of individuals, all those things. And so I think to put the new council in the best position to hit the ground running with the search, I would just ask council's support to ask staff to look at not only firms, but some estimates on what the ranges are, reasonable ranges are for that search service, the search costs themselves. And then the last thing would be a policy that we talked about establishing and never established, and that would be some parameters around what we think are appropriate compensation and other costs that the city should bear when a new city manager comes on board. We've had some personal experience with that in the last four, four and a half years. I think it would be helpful as part of the reflections from this council to put down what their thoughts are at this point in time, so that those can be taken into account by the new council. Whether or not we get to the point where we have a formal policy drafted, I don't think that's reasonable in the next four weeks. But I think having the insight from this council in order to put something like that in place before we go out and hire somebody, so that we affirm what that policy is going to be, how that should look and work, and then that gets used in conjunction with a search. And again, all the mechanics of that can ultimately be decided by the new council. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
I think those are some excellent ideas, and it does kind of give us a little more background into how the new, to give the information to the new council so that they'll be able to make the right choices. Ms. Teeter.
Yes, I do agree with you, Mr. Mackel Downey, on the insight ideas from this council, and also with you, Mr. Moreno. I do, however, feel, as all of you do, that the replacement process and decision-making needs to come from the new council. And I guess that's about all. And Mr. Flannery, I wish you the best in the future. I'll miss you, but maybe you'll miss me, too.
Mr. Benson.
Yes, thanks. I recall four and a half years ago, the old council, starting in about October, November of '06, started the search. And there was some discussion about, was the old council going to appoint the new city manager? Or was the new council going to do that? And I think what was arrived at, and correct me if I'm wrong, those of you who were here, it was decided that the old council would narrow it down to, I think, six people. And then the new council would take those six people. We don't have time to do that at this point in time, because the new council is going to be seated within a month. But I think that it just establishes a precedent that to do something final, that the new council has got to be doing that. I know you mentioned rumors about the direction that the council may take. What rumors are you talking about?
Sir, they're just out there, and I'd rather not open them up now.
Well, you mentioned rumors. What are they?
Sir, just, I think we've all heard them, and they're all out there.
No, I haven't, I haven't heard them.
They're not important for this particular discussion.
You mentioned the rumors. You brought this up. What rumors are you talking about?
Yes. There are rumors that some of these positions have already been picked or promised.
By whom?
By some of the people that might be winners in the next election.
Who are those people?
Yeah, sir, we're not even getting there.
I'm going to, you know, the mayor brings up this to sort of throw a monkey wrench into the whole thing.
Mr. Gaylor.
I'm asking him to explain it. That's all I'm asking him to do.
I think what I've heard is he's indicated that they're rumors and they're only rumors. So I think that the time is better spent disregarding anything that was considered, because it's not going to be an issue for you, since it's a rumor. I would think it's not going to be an issue for the council, since it's only a rumor. So my suggestion is, is let's get to what we know as fact and what you think, instead of doing what's...
I agree, and I think time would be better spent not referring to rumors up here from this dais, which have no basis in fact whatsoever.
Are you done? Mr. Bullock.
Yes, I wanted to congratulate you, Mr. Flannery, on your endeavor and wish you the best of luck in moving forward, because I definitely will miss your leadership, because you have been a leader for this city. So thank you for all that you have done. And saying that, I want to also agree with the three people that have spoke, Mr. Mackel Downey, Mr. Moreno, and Ms. Teeter, that I agree with the fact that what you said, so I'm not going to repeat it, because half of it I've forgotten already. But going forward, I do believe that in the best interest of this council, Mr. Moreno's ideal for this December 2nd is a very good ideal. And in speaking of a new council being seated, there will also be four people that are presently seated that will still be here. It takes five votes to have a consensus. So the new council can come on and they can discuss with the four that are seated, but it would take a lot of effort and lobbying to actually probably change our ideals, seeing how we have been here and been with this staff for this length of time. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Carson.
I don't want to put any justification in rumors, because rumors are rumors. I haven't heard any. I have full faith in our citizens, that whoever gets elected up here will do their best. I do want to say one thing to staff, is that council fully understands that through a transition such as this, that it makes staff very uneasy, and all of us are very in tune to that. Mr. Flannery, we also wish you well. I hope this new adventure that you have taken on is prosperous for you. I also agree with Mr. Moreno. Mr. Moreno and myself being, we may have been sworn in on the same night as other councils, but we are truly the new ones, other than Mr. Diaz. It is challenging, no matter what you think you know, when you are put in this seat. This is a huge undertaking. I do not believe that I would shuck any of this responsibility that's on me to help with the decision-making of an appointment of an interim city manager, when I was brand-new to this seat. What you see on the outside of the city working and what you see on the inside, I would say are two different things. And I think that it's not fair to the citizens, it's not fair to the newly elected, to put such a responsibility there. I agree that, I guess, if all five of the newly elected thought that we really were off-base, they could come in and change that. But I think it's a great disservice to do if we don't undertake what's in front of us right now. I do know that the election is one week from today, and we will all know who will be up here. But there is a job in front of us today, that I feel that those sitting here have lots of experience. I may have only worked with the city staff for two years, but we're losing a lot of years of service here, where there is a lot of input that won't be here if we don't make this decision while this council is seated.
Okay. Mr. Moreno, before you start, would you just help the council on what type of procedure could we do to accomplish what you're saying? Because it appears the entire council is behind you.
I don't want to cut off discussion prematurely, but I am prepared to help facilitate the process when discussion ceases. From what I understand, there are a few action items to accomplish tonight, and then a few that will be reserved for the new council. So I won't do that now unless there's still discussion to be had.
You're the last one, sir.
Okay. So on the action items, I do agree with Councilman Mackel Downey. We need a, we need a policy. There was a lot of confusion around this process, because we don't have a formal policy in place that just simply says that we'll meet five business days within the announcement of resignation and figure out what to do from there. So action item number one, I believe, is to direct the staff to look at forming a council policy that better addresses the course of action when a resignation occurs. And I'll see if there's consensus on that.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Seeing none, go ahead, sir.
And I'll formulate these into motion eventually. I just want to get them out.
Mr. Gaylor, would you be able to kind of keep track of all these?
I'll keep track, and then we... I'll keep track, and then we need to have a timeline. I mean, this council, when it adopts a policy, as you all well know, we don't do it overnight. So it's doubtful that we would have a policy written and in place for an action item before the election.
Right. And we understand that. Go ahead, Mr. Marino.
I think, Councilman McElDowney, did you?
Yeah, I think to answer your question and Mr. Gaylor's question, I think, I don't think the expectation is to have a final policy crafted. I think the key would be, again, using the input from this council as, you know, fodder for that proposal, that it essentially be drafted. Some working document that starts to put a framework together, because I think, again, as Ms. Carson put, the first thing I walked into after my appointment was, I think, within a week, as well as Mr. Benson, after having been sworn in, was interviews for our city manager. And because there wasn't a process, it was literally, we were inventing on the fly, in many respects, how that final series of selection actions took place. And so I think there is, those are wise words, we need to take advantage of what we've learned. And so I would just say, to give Mr. Gaylor those thoughts and have him start to put that draft together. No expectation of it being executed, the final adoption of that policy would be the to-be-seated council. Does that make sense?
Right.
And I was actually just using Mr. Gaylor, just so that we didn't lose track. Because with the nine of us up here, we'll be throwing ideas, and somebody gets lost. So back to you, Mr. Marino.
The other action item is to ask staff to begin researching the options for a firm to begin a search for a new city manager. That includes, as Councilman McElDowney recommended, the estimated costs of such search. It's okay?
Any challenges? Okay, go ahead.
The other action item, to request that Ms. Halsted, in her professional discretion, solicit input from city employees regarding the city manager's selection process, and perhaps what qualities they think, or they would like to see in a city manager.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
In her soliciting of information, is this going to be broad-streamed, from top to bottom? How is this going to be solicited? Is it through a survey, or through one-on-one communication, or is it just something that she puts together? I know you're thinking to yourself, please answer that question for me. So I just want to kind of solidify how this is, because I would like to see a mainstream of all staff being solicited.
And I'll turn it over to Ms. Halsted. My thoughts on that matter were just that her being the chief information officer of the city, she would have a good gauge on that.
Mayor and members of council, I would recommend doing a top-to-bottom analysis through a variety of surveys, focus groups, and collect all of that information. So we would create, similar to what we always do, a communications and outreach plan, which we could send to you for review ahead of time, but it would capture all input from all parties. And we could also capture the lessons learned that Mr. McElDowney talked about as well, if you desire.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
And then I believe the final action item, if no one else has anything else to input, any other input, is to direct a acting city manager, beginning December 2nd, on Mr. Flannery's last day, and for that action to actually occur this evening.
One more time on that one, sir. Just let me make sure I understand what you just said.
Sure. So, an acting city manager to be named in Mr. Flannery's vacancy that occurs on December 2nd, but the actual selection of the acting city manager occur this evening. That way, Mr. Flannery has time to counsel the person into the position, or look at, look at sharing his expertise, obviously, and also capitalizing on the expertise of this council, in order to shoot best shoes.
How would we pick that now? I mean, do you have an idea on how that choice would come up?
So, actually, we are given the authority pursuant to section, or chapter seven, section five of the city charter, to name an acting city manager in the event of a vacancy of the city manager. And it does not state that we have to do that when a vacancy actually occurs. We can do that in advance. There is no timeline, as specified in the city charter.
I guess my question is, what if, out of the nine of us, we have nine different people?
I am prepared to make a motion on a selection, and then we'll see if that garners enough support.
Mr. Benson, or, well, Mr. Benson actually was up first. Now, we're still, we're talking about what you're talking about, not new items at this point. The final item. Mr. Benson, do you have a comment on the final item?
I had a comment on items before he started talking.
Okay, then we'll get back to you, sir. Ms. Snyder?
No, wait, wait. I know, Mr. Gaylor gave me a motion for an executive session. What would this be for, Bob?
Well, that's only because you had indicated, perhaps, a need.
Do you think that the appointment ought to occur in an executive session, or that we should have an executive session before we come out here and make an appointment? Or how do you?
Well, if the, if the motion is going to be for you to appoint an acting city manager, but he's not going to be effectively acting as the city manager, you're just naming, but make it effective, and it'd be December 3rd, because December 2nd is the last day of the city manager, then you don't need the exec session. I was concerned, if you're going to appoint a city manager to act in that capacity while the city manager was still here on board, that how you would, how would that play out? And I wanted to go over the legal ramifications of that. But if that's not going to be the motion, then we don't have to worry about that, and I don't think you need an exec session.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I don't think that we're anywhere prepared to have a, you know, make a decision about who we want as the interim city manager. I think we're going to need some time to have some discussion about this, and put our thoughts into it, and really make a good decision.
Ms. Teeter?
Mr. Marino, how would it be if, in two weeks, this current council, sitting now, will still be in place, that we make that decision then, and we take that time as an opportunity to process who we might think would be a good candidate for that position?
I would not necessarily be opposed to that, Councilwoman Teeter. I do think that decision should rest with this council, considering our professional knowledge of the abilities of staff and our previous work with them. My only issue with that proposal is that that is two weeks that Mr. Flannery could otherwise be, began coaching said new person, whoever it may be, into the position.
Okay, and just in aside, before I go to Mr. Bullock, if that person is one of the deputies now, and it's a big if, that would already be taking place. If, if it's a brand-new person, someone outside of those two particular positions, then I can understand. What, what I would be, you know, I sit here since last Tuesday, trying to think of who would replace him, and, you know, I don't know when we're going to be able to talk about him, but you have done more for this city in this four years than we've seen done in a long time, and I appreciate it. But I would like to be able to sit and hear some ideas from everybody. And, Mr. Gaylor, I don't know if that's an open meeting like this, or it's because, I'm sure you have some, a person that you have feel very comfortable with. I, just sitting here, I have someone I would feel very comfortable with, but they may not be the same person.
Sure.
And rather than you say, I want to have, you know, Joe Smith be the one, and bring it to a vote, and see if we go, and then Mr. Benson does the same thing, and Ms. Carson does the same thing, maybe if we have, on the meeting of the 7th, is that correct, the 7th? Is that our next meeting?
Correct.
Meeting of the 7th, that we set some time for discussion on that. So that, I know, it's our last meeting, but I don't know another time to do it, unless you want to give up Halloween, which I don't want to do. It is, I understand what you're saying, but right now, I don't feel comfortable, because I would like to talk to that person and say, would you be interested? Is this something you'd even think about doing?
Sure. I'll withhold the comment until the rest of council indicates their preference.
Mr. Bullock?
On numerous occasions, we, as a city council, have mentioned that we have the best staff in the metro area. State. I, what I felt to, I guess that some people get nervous when they get down to a decision, but in my mind, I could actually put forth a recommendation for an acting or interim city manager tonight. If it didn't meet with consensus, then some other name could be brought forward, and we'd see if that is the same thing. But for the same council to sit here and say that we can make the decision for a city manager, but yet we don't feel comfortable making it tonight, it, you know everybody that's on staff, that if it isn't a choice that is consensus-bound, then it isn't going to be, it won't fly. I think that we are fully capable of making that decision this evening, but that would be another consensus with city council, if we have five people that want to make that decision, or six, or seven, or eight. And we might all be thinking about the same person, anyway.
I'm sorry? Okay, Mr. Benson, then Mr. McElDowney.
Ms. Teeter, you said, give us two weeks to process. Well, what did you mean by process?
I'm sorry, sir, what?
Process?
I was asking Ms. Teeter what she was referring to, and she said, we need two weeks to process this matter.
And I did, but I can make my suggestion tonight, if that's what everyone wants, and if we don't have a consensus, then it doesn't, it's not of any value, anyway.
Well, what process were you talking about?
Well, I guess it kind of caught me off. I didn't, I wasn't prepared to make that selection tonight, but I've made it already since the discussion started.
Okay, Mr. McElDowney?
I understand, I think, the sensitivity that some folks have referenced relative to, you know, consideration and processing and the like. I think Mr. Marino brings a good point, which is, the sooner we make a decision, the sooner that any formal transition to that interim city manager can get underway. It puts staff at ease and allows folks to focus on a transition discussion. So I think that's all positive. I do acknowledge that it may be uncomfortable for folks to put forth names or think about that in the open meeting, and I guess I would defer to Mr. Gaylor to say, is it appropriate use of an executive session, given that this is a human resources issue, to talk about this in an exec session, and then come out and make a final recommendation in the open meeting?
To discuss someone that is not an employee of the city in exec session doesn't qualify as a personnel basis for an exec session. But the way I was approaching it is, I would be giving you your options as legal advice, and that would qualify as an executive session. But if we're strictly going to be discussing individuals without getting into the points that I was going to raise, then it really wouldn't qualify for legal advice, if I'm not the one that's presenting the advice.
And I think I may have misheard you, and I wanted to just make sure I did not. You suggested to use the word "not an employee of the city," and I think the assumption is that when we talk about naming an interim city manager, we're talking about naming somebody that's on the staff today, and so my point was...
Then that would, then that would qualify as, as a personnel item, if you're talking about an existing employee of the city.
Yeah, my assumption, it's a broad assumption here, but I'm assuming that when we talk about selecting someone for the interim city manager function, to introduce the least disruption and the least chaos to the city, that would be selecting somebody that's on staff today. So if that assumption holds, I see Mr. Marino's got his hand up.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, my suggestion was to retreat to an executive session, have some council discussion on the matter of a selection. If it'd be appropriate to have the city attorney present for that, I would think that makes sense, obviously excluding anyone else other than the city attorney.
Okay.
Allow us to discuss this, so that we can come to a decision this evening.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will put that in the form of a motion.
Yeah, we could. Do you want to make a, somebody you want to do a second? Mr. Diaz?
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Okay, discussion, sorry.
Now.
If I may, I'm just, Mr. Gaylor, we're within our legal authority to go into executive session without it being posted?
Yes, because, only because the agenda calls for the topic that you're going to be discussing. Now, if it didn't do that, then I would say you can't have an exec session to discuss an item that's not a topic of the agenda. But because the agenda specifically says, discussion and action regarding initiation of recruitment for a city manager, I think that's broad enough to cover what you're referring to.
Then I'm okay.
You're okay?
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second, go into executive session, to discuss what we've just talked about, and it's okay. Voice vote, Mr. Gaylor, is that okay?
That's fine, it's for personnel.
For personnel, yeah. Whatever those numbers are. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Will be in executive session, and time is, we don't know.
It's 8:55.
No, I meant back, rather than out.
I'm going to go to the president.
I'll have to.
to make the motion with, and, Mr. Gaylor, would you please be the only one who interrupts him as he's going through this?
Got it.
Thank you, council. What? Okay. Mr. Marino, we are to you. I'm, that's fine, I just, I'm trying to fill the space, so nobody else fills it.
Dominic, I took some notes, if you want me to pass those to you to leverage. Okay.
So, I move that we ask staff to formulate a policy around when a resignation occurs in the city manager's office, to look at hiring firms and estimated cost associated with that procedure. in the city manager's office, to look at hiring firms and estimated cost associated with that procedure, to, for Ms. Halsted to, in her professional capacity, survey the employees regarding the city manager selection process, to appoint deputy city manager Brian McRum on an interim basis beginning December 3rd, and to direct the city attorney to formulate a contract that will be considered in an executive session on November 14th.
Okay, so I have a motion, Ms. Snyder.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gaylor, voice vote, okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Mr. Gaylor, it's back in your court, is that correct?
I've got the motion, I think it's complete, well-stated.
And if there's any questions, if you'll get with Mr. Moreno or Mr. Mackel Downey?
Right.
Okay. Next item is administrative council business. This is not reports, this is something you are gonna ask for some action from council. Mr. Mackel Downey?
We had a, a brief touch on this subject a couple of weeks ago, and given the news of Mr. Flannery's departure brings more urgency to the subject, we are due to wrap up an outstanding review for Mr. Flannery. We left unresolved from last year, and we need to complete reviews for this point, year to date. Obviously, there's a very limited amount of time left, and so proposing an abbreviated format, a very simplified format, with council's permission, I would ask that I be allowed to work with Mr. Aker to come forward with a, the brainstorm on a proposal. If another member of the review committee would wanna work us, with us on that, certainly open to that. The concern is just the limited time in being able to bring back, to bring back something to council quickly that is achievable and meaningful before we, we part company.
Anybody wish to work with Mr. Mackel Downey? Mr. Moreno, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, at a, at a meeting of the Frontera Village Board of Directors Thursday night, several things were brought up that might require some attention. One is the, they brought up the condition of the, the roofs on the housing at Eagle Creek, that that might be something that we need to look into and see if anything can be done about that, because apparently there's spots showing that shingles have been ripped off, whatever. Is that something that we could have the council, I mean, the, the staff look into?
Sure, we can, we can send Neighborhood Services out.
Okay, all right. And, and another thing would have been the, the possibility of, you know, Excel is working with us on a pipeline. I'm, I'm informed that Excel has in the past, on many occasions, donated money for building parks, rec centers, other things like that. Are we looking into anything like that with Excel?
Those have been specific topics that we have talked about with them, yes.
They are donating to the city with the Sand Creek Trail.
Correct.
So, Excel does donate to the city. We would need to get you a report of the different places where they have given money, but Sand Creek Trail in Commerce City is one of the ones that they have donated greatly to.
Well, is it possible that we can get more out of them? Mr. Flannery.
Would you repeat that, sir?
Is it possible that we can negotiate to get more donations out of Excel?
Um, yes, and matter of fact, I'm, I'm aware, I'm aware of what Councilman Bullock mentioned. We are looking at a number of donations across the board.
Okay.
They have been generally open to the discussion, so we'll, we'll see.
Good, okay. I'll, I'll pass that on. Um, and of course, being that this was Frontera, they had problems with the, the road fill and the re-oiling of all the streets in Frontera, creating a mess, I guess, and maybe no notice when there was gonna be an oiling of the streets. Can somebody look into that and maybe get back to their board or myself so I can relay that to them? They have a board meeting every month. And also, people keep asking me about 104th and why we continue to see all the, the cones out there, and I know we've been told that's warranty work, but at what point do they get through with this? This has been going on for what, a couple of months now? Six weeks? I mean, at what point are they gonna be through?
I have to say I agree with you a thousand percent.
Me too.
Um, and I've asked that question several times of staff, and mostly what, what I understand is that it takes time for the concrete to cure. I don't necessarily agree with that amount of time. I've seen quick-set concrete cure in a couple of days. I know it's not with traffic and road, you know, vehicles driving on it. But it is becoming a little bit over, over, overbearing, I think, with the number of days that it's been in place, and I, I will look into it, I promise.
All right, well, thanks. I'll, I'll pass that on to the, uh, uh, thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Bullock?
Uh, yes, uh, the only thing I have is the administrative.
The only thing I have for administrative report is the kaleidoscope of hope for CASA dinner luncheon is gonna be November 17, 2011, from 12 to 1. The lunch is free, but they ask for a financial pledge to CASA. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because as a city with our grants, we give to CASA every year, and I think we should back that up with our presence at this because if you would sit there and see some of the kids that go through the CASA program and how they're court-advocated lawyers take care of them, you would know where our grant money's going to. And I think as a presence for council, we should have a table of our own and say, we will be there and we will give a donation or a financial pledge. And it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to break the bank, but it should show the concern because they deal with a lot of children in Commerce City. So, I'm just asking if I can get some support from council to be there with me on November 17, from 12 to 1, at the Plaza at the Merchandise Mart.
Okay, anybody that wishes, please get in touch with Mr. Bullock and get that done. That would be discretionary. Okay, reports, Mr. Gaylor? Mr. Flannery?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of items. You may recall there's been some discussion in the past by this council and others about the recycle bins down on the gas station parking lot where the Historic Society is, where it's continuing to accumulate trash. Uh, you ready?
I'm ready, yeah.
Me too.
Uh, city drop-off recycling facility is to close on Friday, November 4th, so those will be out of there. And be, it'll be relocated. We are working with the different agencies that use that, and so we're, we're working for a better location. Secondly, I wanted to read a quick note that I received from Michelle Halsted today, and maybe some of you are aware of it, I don't know. Um, this is, we're pleased to announce that Metro West newspapers, publishers of the Brighton Blade and Commerce City Sentinel have expanded their local presence into the city. Publisher has dedicated a full-time reporter to the city, and the paper is expanding its news coverage.
Congratulations.
Uh, these are, they are phasing in circulation with free home delivery of the paper to Reunion and Buffalo Run, looking at other areas as well. As the circulation and advertising revenues allow, the remainder of the community will receive papers in the, in their neighborhood. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Oh, it'll be so nice.
Uh, just came in today at about noon.
It will be so nice to be able to get some news out there. Um, that, that's terrific news, sir. Okay, reports, Mr. Moreno.
No report.
Mr. Benson?
Uh, no report.
Whoa. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, JD.
Ms. Carson?
No report.
I will get that in two weeks.
Don't get him started. Ms. Carson?
No report.
Ms. Snyder?
No report.
Ms. Teeter?
Thank you, JD. No report.
Ms., Mr. Diaz?
No report.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
No report.
Mr. Bullock?
I attended the ribbon-cutting this morning at Central Park West, I mean, the Central Park Boulevard, and last, uh, the 18th, they had the Excel meeting on their power plant, Cherokee Power Plant, at the rec center, and it was very sparsely attended. Matter of fact, no one was there but me and three other residents. Thank you. No report now.
And I was there with you today, and I am so tired of people coming from Washington and nothing but advertisement for the President's jobs bill.
I was so happy they advertised that job bill.
Oh, no report for me. If there be no further business before this board, we're done. But, we're going right into GID. I know you would need a minute. I'm gonna start billing them for those advertisements. It should be? Oh.
Okay, this should be an open and closed public hearing.
Are you ready? Okay, Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District meeting of October 24th, 2011, now come to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Natale?
Here.
Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Benson?
Here.
Ms. Carson?
Here.
Ms. Teeter?
Here.
Mr. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Chairman Natale, you have a quorum.
All right. Okay, there's only one set of minutes before the GID board this evening for approval in the minutes of the meeting of October 17, 2011. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 17, 2011. Ms. Snyder?
We approve the meeting minutes, October 17, 2011.
Ms. Teeter?
Second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October 17, 2011. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, request a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. There's one item under public hearing schedule for this evening, is continuation of the 2012 budget and certification of the mill levy. I'd like to open the public hearing to Resolution GID 2011-1, give the audience an opportunity to speak on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. Is there any discussion by the board? Are you discussing?
I was just curious, is, is this a, a meeting or a live auction?
It's a live auction.
I, I have nothing, I have nothing.
Okay. I'll now close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve Resolution GID 2011-10. Mr. Mackel Downey?
So moved.
Mr. Benson?
Second.
I've moved and seconded approved Resolution GID 2011-10. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution GID 2011-10, resolution adopting the budget and certification of the mill levy for the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, GID for the year 2011.
I've had a motion and a second. City attorneys read the title, request a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. The motion passes. There'd be no further business before this board. Meeting adjourned. Everybody drive safe going home. Thank you and goodbye.